I hope so. That's the plan. Cliff brought all his muscle to make sure it goes smoothly. Y'all like been working out all week getting ready for this, or, you know, just curious? Carb up last night, or?
Just dropped it on today.
Just dropped it on. Chief, if you could sweep the room for weapons, that'd be great.
Hand grenades.
Shovel handles, you know. Shanks.
Always awkward silence. It's always awkward silence.
This is.
Time is now 6:00 P.M. We will call this meeting to order.
Join me in prayer. Father, we rejoice in your love and we thank you for the gift above all gifts, the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ. During this season of celebration, may we follow the light that was sent to us. We pray for all who have a difficult time during this season, whether it's from grief or loneliness, hardship or illness. May your light come into their hearts and fill them with your everlasting love. Be with us tonight and every night. Protect us and lead us. Help us to reflect your light during the wonderful season and throughout the year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Listen, visitors. That was a great prayer you had. Thank you. Here's all council members are present. Chief, do we have any comments? All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to our consent agenda, A, budget report October 2024, and B, approval of minutes for meeting held November 6, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries. Okay, discussion and action items. A, discussion and possible action considering options for repair of the City Hall roof and the Ellis Park Pavilion.
Mayor, council, I put an updated, um, agenda memo in front of you. It should have the red writing and the with additional quote that we got. Basically what we're looking at right now, this is all hurricane, uh, barrel damage repairs. Um, so we have several options for the roof. Uh, understanding that the small portion of damage that was done is on the south corner of the building. Um, in looking at that damage, it looks with matching funds from FEMA, reimbursement funds from FEMA, 7525. In looking at the roof, this has been an ongoing, uh, problem with the city for a long time. Our roof is, if you can look, we've got tiles leaking everywhere, all over the building. Um, and you look at the way the roof is constructed, damaged or not, it's, uh, we need to re-roof the building. Um, we can coat it, which is the smaller portion using forced labor for 35,000. Or we can re-roof the building using a built-up method and a, uh, a commercial seamless, heat-sealed, um, roof material that is what needs to be done. Chief, this quote on that is 88,000. I'm sorry, yeah, 88, oh, 68. Uh, JCO roofing here in town. Uh, the cheap version would be to fix, uh, the roof by, by coating it. I believe it has a 10-year warranty, is that correct?
Yeah, the material warranty is pretty aggressive, it's 1015-year.
So basically what we're looking at is the choice between doing the roof correctly for 88,000 or stopgap, which is 35. Moving to the next portion is Ellis Park Pavilion. The problem with Ellis Park is, again, the same thing. We've got a portion of the building that has storm damage. Um, the cheapest fix on just the storm damage alone is 14,823, just for the, the part that's been ripped off and twisted there. The problem with Ellis Park Pavilion is there, there's other existing damage that our insurance company will not let us. It will not be insured unless we fix the building. So that's, uh, several footers that have rotted out. Purlins, almost all the purlins on the east side of the building are rusted. The roof itself is rusted. And then there's a few pieces of, uh, twisted, uh, red steel, red iron up there as well. So the cheapest fix to that would be 59,284. So what we want to know from council is, one, which way do you want to go to fix the roof? You want to go and fix it what we think is correct, and we've got our experts here to talk about that if needed. Uh, or the cheaper re-roof, which is 88,000, which is technically what we really should do. And the pavilion, we almost have no choice. Um, it's either tear it down, or, you know, we, we can't, we can't just fix the storm-related damage because they're not going to insure it. And it has, we have an engineering report that basically says it needs to be redone, so that's where we're at. We do have an engineering report on the pavilion, uh, from a third-party engineer who basically says the same thing. And we also had, uh, engineers from the insurance company and FEMA inspect the building here, that it basically told us the same thing as well.
As far as the pavilion goes, I'm completely opposed to tearing it down. It's our most used park in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it serves a lot of families and it's a great place for the community to gather. Um, so I'm for repairing it as it needs to be repaired, so that we can get it insured and use it as it's intended to be used. Um, and my opinion is the same for the City Hall roof. I'm not a, a fan of patchwork. Um, if, if we had major budgetary constraints that allowed us not to do this, I would say maybe no. But my opinion is that we fix it the correct way the first time.
Yeah, and Cliff, and I, I agree. Cliff and I, and Trish talked about that, th- this afternoon as well. If the intent of the city was to move out of this building within 10 years and go somewhere else, no problem.
We just got here.
But I think this is a, a long-term building.
Yeah.
And, uh, this probably should have been done when we moved into the building. Uh, but, but again, we've had budget issues, you know, ongoing as well. And I think, uh, after talking with Carl and Cliff, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
For what they're going to do. You know, this, this roof doesn't have any pitch on it. And it essentially is a flat roof that is maybe two, three degrees of pitch.
We, we figure about, about 15 feet to one, 15 to one drop, 15, 20 to one. There's only about three feet between the front and the back.
Yeah.
Over 12,500 square feet of, uh, surface area.
So that's basically what, what, what we're up against. We had a hard time getting, of course, you know, it's post, you know, storm and recovery, but we had a hard time getting people to respond. The quotes, it's just been very difficult.
I think residential-wise, it's been the same way.
Sure.
With roofing companies, so.
So basically that's what we, we're just asking council, you know, to give us a direction, and that's where we'll go. Uh, we still do not have a determination, uh, on the insurance portion. One, whether they're going to pay any, all, some, we don't know. Uh, we've had multiple emails, uh, we've got insurance people that are working with our insurance company, still haven't heard anything from them either, so we don't know what's going to be paid and what's not as far as the, the, um, one, the deductible, two, the, the reimbursement from FEMA, we don't know. So I can't even give you a number on that, I would even try to estimate it at this point. But we know, we know for sure that what is damaged by the storm should be eligible for 7525. But that's a small portion.
So do you need a motion on this, though?
What's the, on the JCO, what's their warranty and length of time?
Uh, 20-year?
20.
Yeah, it's going to be a retrofit to the existing roof. It's a, it's a seamless PVC application over, it's one piece even up on the, uh...
So they, are, are they adding pitch to it?
No, they're not. And, and there's nothing, there's nothing wrong or incorrect with slightly pitched or flat roof, but you got to have the material conducive to protecting the interior. Modular R paneling is not, the best way to go with such a slight pitch. We have water standing issues, uh, up on the roof, we didn't have since we bought the building. This was, it was a consideration when the building was, was done originally. Uh, we just did not have the funds to get to it. It's been a constant issue.
So between these two, you're looking roughly what, 150, 160,000?
140... 147, 352.
And all that's out of contingency?
Yes.
Do you have any kind of timeframe on how long it's going to take for either of these contractors for start to completion?
We don't have a timeframe as of now. But as of now, we've at least got the patch on the roof, um, and everything roped off the park, and we'll keep it that way until we can get it done.
Yeah, that needs to be addressed rather quickly.
I would, I would think within three to six weeks.
One, one of the benefits, not to go backwards on this, but one of the benefits of this is, um, the, the pavilion repair especially will, does include, uh... Does the first bid include painting as well?
Yes, I believe both of them do.
What, what happens is we need to get that, the, the red iron, uh, scaled and repainted, otherwise it's just going to continue to rot. And it's, it's in pretty rough shape right now, so both, we will get that painted as well. Once the roof comes off, they'll be able to paint all that up in there, and that, that itself is going to be...
Both contractors said they think we have another 20, 25 years with the structure, if it's properly repaired and painted.
Okay.
That we should buy ourselves at least another 20 years with the structure.
That's good.
Any further comments?
Are you looking for a motion on this?
Yeah, sure.
I'll make a motion to approve repairs to the roof of City Hall, um, for the JCO estimate of 88,068 dollars, and repairs to Ellis Park Pavilion, uh, for the repair cost of 59,284 and four cents.
Please second.
Jeremy, you have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No nays? Let the record reflect, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Cliff, you don't have to get on the roof now. You don't have to get on the roof with them up. Okay, discussion action item B, discuss and consider adopting ordinance 24-522, and ordinance amending the additional standards provisions of Chapter 2, Article 4, Code of Ethics, Richwood Code of Ordinances.
So the language presented is, um, based on the motions made last month. Um, so I just need y'all to review that. If there's anything else we want to workshop or talk about, we can.
Can I say it?
Can you pull it up?
Yeah, you can pull it up, that's fine.
I think it looks pretty good.
Came from it.
So this is, um, was added to the additional provisions, um, section of the Code of Ethics.
Can you read the whole thing of your motion?
You can just motion to adopt ordinance 24...
Do we have any public comments on these? Any, any comments in regards to these ordinance additions?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 24-522 as written in the draft.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries. Thank you, guys. Discussion and action item C, discuss and consider adopting ordinance 24-533, and ordinance amending the provisions of the Code of Ordinances for the itinerant merchants, peddlers, solicitors, etc.
So Councilwoman Reynolds requested this agenda item, um, in response to some, um, communication and feedback from residents. I had, as a courtesy, notified the residents that there was going to be, there was a peddler's permit issued the last week. Um, and there was lots of kind of feedback and, and opinion, opinions on the current ordinance. Current ordinance is from like 1984, has never been amended, so, um, Amanda made a couple, um, recommendations. I added in a, a few of my own that I'd like to see in there. Um, she requested that we change the time from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on the Friday. Um, I requested to add the Section 2, which is states that if you, if a solicitor makes contact at a no solicitation posted residence, and they do contact us, that that will be revocation of permit. One, because residents have complained that the solicitors will say, "Yeah, I saw your sign, but I didn't care." Um, so this would give me the right to basically just revoke that permit. Um, the current ordinance also doesn't address the background check that I do. Uh, we charge a fee that pro, that covers the costs that I incur conducting a background check on solicitors. So I wanted to add that in there to make sure that it is an ordinance, so no one can kind of question why I do it. Um, and then also give me some business days to do that process. Um, it's kind of not addressed in the previous ordinance. The next one was, um, Amanda's recommendation to change the permit period from 12 months to three months.
You think three months is...
12 is a long time.
Sufficient? I think one month would be sufficient.
The, the only reason I said three months is because we kind of cover a larger geographical area. You can't walk all of our neighborhoods like in, in one day, or, you know. So I was just giving a little bit of leadway, um, because 12 months is a very, very long time.
Sure.
In my opinion. Uh, but that was just my suggestion.
Um, this is another, this is, this next section four, I, um, would like to see added. Currently, there's no, the ordinance doesn't speak on what are cause for revocation of a permit, other than, um, kind of misleading us on why, what you're selling or why you're selling it. So I would like to have a clause in there that allows staff to, to make the decision if something's justifiable. If PD gets a lot of complaints on behavior, um, just for instance, the, the man that requested the permit last year was very, I don't know how to say this nicely. Um, he was very crude to the clerks, he cussed at them. I did let his company know. Um, I made sure to call and speak with his supervisor and let him know. He expressed his distaste with the ordinance in a not-so-nice manner. Um, and I wish I could have not issued that permit altogether, just based on, it makes me nervous for how he would speak to the residents that tell him no, just based on how he spoke to clerks in the office. Um, so I did let him know, if I get one complaint, it, it, it's revoked. But I had nothing backing my decision to not issue that permit or revoke it.
Mm-hmm.
So I added this clause in there. This is already on the form that they fill out, but it's not in ordinance, so it's really not enforceable. Um, so I just added that in there, in ordinance form.
That was the last update, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm concerned about, if you go up a little bit, I, and I don't know what, what your situation is, but, uh, it just says the possible criminal charges. Um, I mean, it, I, what is, what does that mean?
Trespassing on a no solicitation, when somebody has a no solicitation sign, they, the homeowner could request trespassing charge?
So?
And that follows the law?
I mean, yeah, that's what it's, it's referring to, and that's on our current form that we pass out, it's just not in the ordinance.
Well, so we, we can, we can sit here and try to have them trespassed all day long, but, um, this, first of all, they have to show up here to get a permit. Second of all, they have to carry that...
That same person has to carry that.
On their person, individually.
And in roughly two years of being back here in Richwood, uh, I've probably had 15 or 20 people come and knock on my door, even though I have a big old no solicitation sign.
But what's interesting about that is this year alone, I've only issued four permits.
Exactly.
So they're not getting permits.
So I asked them, I was like, "Where, where are y'all soliciting?" I mean, "What city do you..." "Oh, we're in Lake Jackson, right?"
Well, they don't realize when they cross that bridge.
Well, no, they realize.
Yeah. Well, they tell us that, I guess.
Yeah, they realize that, yeah. So, but yes, I mean, the last one that came in my yard got mouthy with me.
Right.
It was three of them.
They're very pushy.
From staff's point of view, all I can do is advise them to call the police, and it seems like there's more of, "I'm going to go to Facebook and make it known that this happened," instead of actually calling the police department to take action, because I, speaking with chief, because we were talking about, how many calls do you get on solicitors that are walking around without a permit? It's not many. Um, so there's only so much we can do if we don't know they're out there. Um, that's why I made it known, that's why I decided to make the public post that I did last week, to let you know, like, there is a legal solicitor out and about, one, just him. Um, so if you see anybody else, please call dispatch or call code enforcement during business hours.
Mr. Page, do you have a comment?
I did have one, but now he brought up the second one. First one is, one thing I didn't notice is, what about in terms of if, if, uh, permit is revoked, what kind of timetable maybe is there that they have the right to come and ask for another one?
I think I have...
I think he had a year on there, but I...
So here it says, if the revocation, applicants whose certificates are revoked are not eligible for reapplication for six months from the date of revocation, and if it recurs twice in a 24-month period, it'll be one year from the last revocation.
And I guess the other one, the second question is kind of an observation. We're talking about those that say they think they're in Lake Jackson, and what I'm hearing from people, whatever, they, most of these are people that have permits or over on the other side of Oyster Creek and coming in over the new bridge. So maybe we can look at the possibility of putting, you know, city limit signs, signs up right there at that, that's what he says, that you're entering Richwood.
Right.
Then they have no excuse.
I would... And that's the, the part of town I'm talking about, that they're walking over from like Poppy or what's on that side of Lake Jackson.
I would also like some no solicitation signs, like something that tells them you have to have a permit to, to solicit. I know it should be something they check for, but it's just an extra layer of communication and to say you're, you know...
You're allowed to be here.
When you came into the city, you, you should have seen that you have to have this.
Kind of like the texting...
Yeah, it's not part of the ordinance, obviously, but just as a comment, I would like to have some signage.
Within the city.
Yep.
How does this apply to, um, any students or anything like that that are selling for school, whatever?
Church, education, politics, uh, religion, not required.
No.
That's, my, my question is, which, that gives me, um, the one on the religion, because that's the one that gives me the biggest trouble knocking on the door.
I believe we're limited with state law by that.
If I put a sign that says no soliciting.
Should be all.
And if, yeah, if, if they, if they're part of a religious organization and they knock on my door, they break the law at that point. Can I, in the worst case, I call non-emergency police department.
Sure.
So our ordinance, the way it reads currently, is that the city secretary shall issue a license without the payment of the fee, and those situations requiring registration only. So even if they're going to be door-to-door in the city, they still should come in and let us know and register with us, based on the ordinance currently.
That helps us, and i- if somebody is rude or refuses to leave your property or whatever, that at least we have a permit to go back to. You know, what church are you from, what political affiliation do you have? We can still go back and speak with somebody and hopefully alleviate further problem.
Would realtors fall under this solicitor?
I guess, I just, I don't feel good about the whole, I mean, if someone goes in your backyard, that's one thing, but to, to raise it to criminal activity, to knock on someone's door, I just, I just can't...
I think it's, but it's only if it says no soliciting, right?
If there's a no soliciting sign.
I mean, they have to push the boundary so far, Mike, to reach that point. I think that's good. They, they get pushy. You heard Paul, they showed up with three in his house the other day.
No, and, I mean...
Is there any other option than, I mean, if they're...
I mean, I can...
Knocking on the door, and then you don't answer the door, and they go away, that's, that's something that the residents can do.
But if, so I can remove that language if that's what's holding you up, but homeowner, I want this guy trespassing on my property, that's their right, that's the law.
And see, there's a couple of different options, too. I mean, you can issue a criminal trespass warning.
Right.
Where there's no charges involved, it's just a warning saying, "Hey, do not come back on my property. If you do come back on the property, then you're arrested." Or you get somebody that's rude and, you know, sits there and starts, you know, cussing at you because you don't want to buy their, their electricity or whatever. Then, I mean, you have that option to, to have them, you know, have a trespass charge brought up against them.
I'm just imagining, when I was a kid, I mowed lawns, and I used to go and knock on everybody's doors, and I didn't read the signs, you know? And I just, I just see this...
I think it's a little different than the sham...
And may, maybe you're right, maybe there's these people that are up there that are really pushy and, 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 but I hate to, you know, use a grenade for something that can be handled with a BB gun.
And we're not making...
We're not making the law.
If a resident calls, and this is in the ordinance, doesn't require the police officer to take action criminally, this is, that's why it says possible, like, it could result. But that's if anybody keeps continually harassing somebody, if they feel harassed, they feel harassed.
You know, nine times out of 10, we get a call like that, and you go out there, if you find the person, I mean, nine times out of 10, they're gone.
Yeah.
You find the person, you talk to them, "Hey, look, you know, this is the law, you know, you can't be doing this." "Oh, okay, I didn't know," or whatever. I mean, it doesn't mean they're automatically going to jail.
Just gets a permit, is handed a copy of this ordinance, and I feel like it gives it a little more teeth to see, like, to say, like, if somebody has a no solicitation, like, it's your responsibility to read this ordinance and become familiar with it if you're going to solicit in our, in our city, because it is an important thing to our residents. Like, they, they made it very, like, very well-known on this post that I made, I didn't realize it, and, um, I don't know, it might make them think twice before knocking on somebody's door, because it seems like that's the, one of the biggest issues, that they completely disregard no solicitation signs.
If a guy that came into our office last week, talked to a resident that has a no soliciting sign, the way he talked to my staff, I would be on the phone.
What did he say?
Oh, I can't say it on YouTube video.
But it was very foul language.
Yeah.
This gentleman is the one that residents, I myself, have been calling and complaining about, he does get very...
He got very belligerent, he was using every foul word you can imagine.
Is this the solar panel guy?
He did finally pick it up.
He did finally pick it up.
He was, he, not, say it again.
Solar panel guy?
No, Vivint Security, no Vivint.
But if I was a homeowner, and somebody was talking to me like that when I told them I wasn't interested, if I had that no soliciting sign, I would be on the phone.
I mean, he ripped paperwork out of my hands, yeah.
So, so he was, he was ripping paperwork out of people's hands, he was yelling profanities, and he was waving his arms in the air, that's correct? That's what this person did?
It was over the phone, yeah. When I, when he came into the office, I stood at the counter, and he was a little more reserved, but he still jerked paperwork out of my hand, and it was just, I immediately got on the phone with Vivint, said the number he listed as his employer.
I say, I, I just, I just hate to make a law, or, you know, so, I mean, I say, I hear what you're saying, that it's already there, it's already against the law to be criminally charged, it's just, it could put us into a position where we have to do something because a resident is saying, "Hey, you know, it says it right here, that you can criminally charge these people," but they're not that guy. Most people are not that guy, you know?
They already have that ability, though. It doesn't matter what it says here. It doesn't matter what it says here.
We can just remove it, it's not that, that big of a deal. This is, this was, this language was already on the form we've been passing out for years. I just wanted it to be in ordinance form, so that way it actually.
I'll be honest with you, I think I would, I would, how do you, I'm gonna go to law enforcement, I mean, how do you feel about it? That's probably a better way to look at it.
Well, the last one, the last people that came onto my property and talked to me the way that they did, if I wasn't there, then who's gonna be there? My wife's gonna be there by herself. And I don't want, I don't want those people on my property. Now, the majority of them, hey, look, there's a no soliciting sign. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. All right, cool, and they leave. But there are the handful of people that are gonna give us problems, and that are gonna continue to be thrown on our side, and we don't need those people in the city.
Okay. Okay, and it gives you the power to deal with it if you have to?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Page?
I think there's one word on there that makes it reasonable to stay. It says can be, not will be. The fact that it says can be charged is if you do it out today. Otherwise, if you say if you do it, then you will be charged, and that, yeah, that's, but the fact it says can be, it's a discretion of us, the city, as to whether or not they're going.
Well, in this case, in a great example, in Paul's case, if, if, for instance, he said, hey, there's a, you know, no soliciting sign on my house, they're like, okay, cool, and they walk off, he's great. But Samantha, his wife, calls and says, hey, Paul, they're, they're not leaving, they're standing out there yelling at me. Paul calls PD and says, charge them. We've got two warnings. We've got the sign issuing a warning, and then verbal warning, and they're still not leaving. You had, you know, you had your legal notices all in one, so that's a thought, you know?
I mean, once again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, Chief, your officers, they, they practice discretion, they have discretion. You allow them to use, I mean, they're all grown. You allow them to drive a car and carry a gun, they know what they're doing.
We, we default to a position of trying to solve a problem without filing criminal charges against anybody if we can. If they, if folks will not allow us to do that, well, then, of course, we will, right? But it does give us the avenue, and it gives us the ability, you know, it gives us the, some teeth behind, you know, you have to get a permit, you, you know, you have to obey the law. But we do have discretion, we'll use it, we don't want to jam anybody up unless we have, we have to.
And that, okay, so I'm good with that. On another issue, on regards to not getting the permit, is there a maximum fine? You know, I, I just say this because where I work, it has this sign where I park, and it says, you know, by city ordinance, if you cross this, you know, no trespassing, the fine is five hundred dollars.
Yeah, we have a general penalty clause just in our code of ordinances, and this ordinance refers back to that clause. I think it's a fine up to five hundred dollars.
So it'd be classy, man.
The judge will set anywhere between zero to five hundred.
Very nice. Now, let me see a show of hands, who likes solicitors? I think this is a good idea.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-four dash five-three-three as drafted in the agenda packet.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries. So long, solicitors. Okay, no items removed, and it's set agenda. Next would be capital improvements projects update.
All right, yeah, so, start with our Harper Emergency Generator project. Gas lines in North Mayhand have both been, I'm sorry, North Mayhand have been installed. Center Point needs to mount the gas meter, which comes down to me, it's my request, which will be made this week. Automatic transfer switch gear is in, ready to operate in conjunction with the generator. We consider the sites both forty, forty percent complete. And the generators are still due on site mid-December. We are anticipating startup mid-January. The Mintmod project, contracts were executed by the contractor and provided to the city. Attorney has signed off on them as of today, and we sent the contractor's copy back to Strand Associates to be distributed back to the contractor. We have a notice to proceed date of January thirteenth for that project. Cypress Drive and Misty Court, the topographical survey was completed for that project. TerraCon, which is a geotechnical firm, which will be doing the boring, have a, have a sub-agreement executed. Their boring will ultimately tell Strand what the design criteria needs to be for, for the streets to maintain integrity over the next twenty years. And then we anticipate bidding late January, early February for that project. Streets master plan, the gathering of data, and the report has already, has began. They anticipate a field visit for the master plan at some point in January. The Parks Master Plan, a draft agreement for that master plan has been sent to the city for comment. We have no comments on the, the draft task order, but that particular master plan is not going to be started until April. We're gonna hold off on that just in case we encounter any unforeseen financial troubles in the early part of the budget. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Council, construction on the Pipe Lip Station Six has been complete inspection, most of this y'all, y'all got in your weekly report. We have a new PDMG for FEMA. We should be having a meeting with her coming up, we should be tomorrow, but hadn't got a notice yet, so it may be next week. PD and EOC improvements have been completed, and they look excellent. This was the desks and storage in the emergency operations center. Looks fantastic. I think that was money well spent on a supplemental item. Met with Matt last week, and we'll probably be meeting, bringing Matt to follow up with y'all in January. Continue efforts with FEMA on the barrel recovery, we're still working through that. Final debris removal with waste connections was completed. Six hundred and forty yards and a hundred and six point six eight tons of material were removed, and that's all I've got.
Thank you very much.
We bet.
Okay, council members, comments and reports. Councilmember Stalberg, do you have anything to add?
Not really. It's gonna get cold, maybe later on this week, so bring your pets inside and your plants. I think that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Challenger, would you like to add anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Reynolds?
I just wanted to say it's nice to see some faces in the audience. Thank you for participating. I love it when our residents come to these meetings. That's what we are here for, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Yerson?
I would say that the work on the bridge over there by the college, that was really quick, and that was, that was really well taken care of. I dropped it there every day, heading over to work, and y'all managed that very well. You know, never had any hiccups, traffic jams, nothing. I mean, it was really well managed. Also, our last meeting before the holidays, you know, just everybody be safe if you're traveling, you know, keep that in mind, there's a lot of people gonna be on the roads, and, you know, try to plan your trips accordingly, leave early, be safe.
Leave early, stay late.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fowden?
Not too much. I was gonna kind of, I'll tag on to about the weather. It is supposed to turn cold this weekend. It kind of brought up something I noticed a little on the news feeds and stuff about this time of year, people are turning heaters on. If you haven't gotten your heater checked, you know, it's always a good idea to, to call the local company, have them come out and check that. I noticed there was a house that like burned down in Lake Jackson. I don't know if it was due to heater or not, but, you know, it seems like you have a lot more calls during this time of year with the fire department because of heater issues. And it's supposed to be a mild, mild winter with, if you look at the plumbers' almanac, with spots of very cold temperatures for a few days, so. That's about it. I know this is our last meeting for the holidays, so wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Y'all enjoy, spend time with your families, Happy New Year. We'll see you next year.
Thank you, sir. I almost got to do another, sir?
Does he owe you thunder?
Nobody stole your thunder today.
I almost got to do another meeting with, wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, but these two cats got it, so. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas as well.
Don't worry, I'm moving your report first.
No, 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 everybody gets to go first.
I can move it, I control that.
I do hope to see everybody next week for our city event that is on next Thursday.
Friday?
Friday, okay. Please RSVP to Ms. Kirsten, because she needs those in. If you have spare time, I encourage councilor or anybody they know to do shop with the cop. I had a blast doing it last year. It's this Saturday at eleven AM.
Don't tell where.
What's that?
Please don't tell where.
Oh.
That has to be in control.
Well, if you can, if you have spare time, get with Chief at eleven AM. So that's all I know about that.
Jump me, he stole my thunder, weird.
Oh, you wanna go first?
I control it, I'm good.
And again, just safe, courteous, and enjoy your holidays with your loved ones. So, thank you, guys. Next is items of community.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, we are, do have shop with the cop this weekend. If you want to help, get with me or Chief, and we can let you know where and when to be. I did put it in your weekly update also. We have twenty-seven children of thirteen families that we're gonna be helping this year. We're gonna be able to provide them each with a holiday meal and a few with a Christmas tree. So we're very happy to have such involvement from our community partners. The businesses have really shown up for us this year. And then we're always grateful to the Natalie Woolsey Foundation, because they are a large supporter of our program. KRB is up to great things. They are about to reinstall, update all the garden beds at the garden. They have lots of volunteers out there. And they are like a hundred pounds away from their thousand-pound goal of recycling, and we don't even have to finish till July. So that's another shout-out to community partners. Furniture store has been just overloading Margaret's car with plastics.
I forgot, I bet everything is wrapped when they get it.
Crawford's is killing it for us, so, she, I told her she should just start stockpiling plastic for next year, because we can apply once a year, so.
Yeah, give us a little cubby in the warehouse.
Yeah, they, well, they even talked about maybe reaching out to other beautification programs, and maybe our community partners will want to assist the other cities in getting benches also, since we were able to do it in less than six months, almost.
Who drinks it? Skinning it down.
Yep, I think that's all I had.
The banners are.
Oh, the GCC, GCCA, GCAA Award, which is the Governor's Community Achievement Award, was won by the Beautification Committee three years ago. The project finished, we were awarded a hundred and ten thousand dollar grant, and with that, they decided to do the light poles coming into, the new poles coming into Richwood on the two thousand and four bridge. So they're installed, the signage is installed, says welcome to Richwood. Jeremy thought it was tiger gold and purple.
It looked, yeah, it looked purple and gold at night.
I said it's navy and gold, but we, whatever, he thought, he was like, did I do that?
Wishful thinking, man.
Anyway.
I support this.
Public Works is helping us maintain those, and we will be changing those out with the holiday seasons as I get more accustomed to ordering signage.
And they'll add the flowers in spring.
So in the spring, they will also be adding wildflowers to the middle median there.
Yeah. And we, KRB is doing the yard of the month for the Christmas, so they created an event on Facebook. So if you have a yard you want to nominate, you have to go to the event, upload the photo to that event.
And share it to get the likes.
And share it to get likes, and whoever.
First place is a hundred dollar gift card.
Yes, so.
I'll pay for that like.
Ride around if you see lights that you like.
Yep.
Now, I did want to mention your banners.
Yes.
Your westbound ones look a little misleading.
I thought about that today, too. I should say bye, come again.
That's probably where your solicitors are getting confused.
Well, they can go bother Lake Jackson.
Yeah, they can go over there.
I did think about that, that maybe on my next run, we'll be like, see you soon.
There you go.
I did think about that.
But they look very nice.
Thank you. I'm new to this.
We need to change it from gold and yellow to appropriate color.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're airborne over that bridge.
I think that's all I got.
Is that it for community interests?
That's all I got.
Okay, do we have any future agenda items? No?
I'm sure there will be some.
Good enough.
Elections will be on the agenda for sure.
Okay, time is now six forty-three, and with no further business to discuss, meeting is adjourned.